Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, November 28th, 2018. We are in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square. I'd like to welcome everybody who is here, and we always begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we're very honored this morning to have a meet and greet presentation with the CEO, is that right, of Portland General Electric, and that's Maria Pope, and she's here with Wendy Valleez. So if you would, are you doing a PowerPoint presentation? So if you want to come to this table, so you can do that, we would invite you to come up and say a few words, and thank you very much for being here.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you very much for having us, and I apologize to those of you who have my back, I'm sorry. The slides are more interesting. So, first of all, I think it's really important that we level set on kind of what has taken place over the last, you know, several centuries in Oregon, in the electric industry, and just spend a little bit of time being appreciative for those who've come before us, because we're very, very lucky to live in a state that has enormous hydro resources, that is a state that works collaboratively together. Portland General Electric has been a part of our community in Oregon for over 130 years, and takes our responsibility very seriously. For myself, I've lived in Oregon for almost all of my 53 years. I've worked in several different industries, in forest products, in high-tech as well as on banking and apparel manufacturing. I've been at the utility for about a decade, and most recently ran our generation and power supply operations area, and previous to that was our Chief Financial Officer. I'm going to cover a couple of things today around how we show up as Portland General Electric, how important it is to continue the strong legacy of service that we have to the communities that we serve, but also talk a little bit about how the energy sector is transforming. Very clearly, we have seen a call to action with regards to climate change, most notably the federal report that just came out of the Department of Energy on Friday, I think gave us all of additional sense of imperative with regards to climate issues. And then also, we serve many cities, many counties, that have climate action plans, and many large customers, as well as residences, who want to make sure that we as a utility are doing the right thing as our energy economy transforms over the next couple of decades. So, in terms of who we are, we have been around, as I mentioned, for about 130 years. We are the number-one utility in the West, ranked for business customer satisfaction, something we take very, very seriously. We also are the number-one utility that sells green energy to customers. This is customers who voluntarily decide to purchase green energy. We are also one of Oregon's largest employers. We are your largest taxpayer, and we have just under 150 of our employees who live in your county. We donate to our time and effort in terms of volunteer hours, over 40,000 hours collectively as a company, and just about $4 million annually between employees, our foundation, and the company, we contribute to the state, not-for-profit and educational organizations. Sitting with me here, as you mentioned, is Wendy Valleez. Wendy's on the Salem Chamber Board. We also have Richard Goddard, who serves on the Chameka County College Foundation, and Teresa Haskins, who many of you may know, serves on the SEDCorps Board, as well as Salem Hospital. We feel very strongly in community service and making sure that we are leaders in all of the communities that we serve, so thank you. So, PGE has stood for Safe, Reliable, and Affordable Power for years, and we sit upon the shoulders of those who came above before us in terms of clean energy. But let me first talk a little bit about safety. The level of electrical current and voltage that we deal with, and Wendy's and my coworkers work with every day, can truly kill people. We take safety extraordinarily seriously, the safety of our coworkers, the safety of our customers, and the safety of everyone in your community who come in contact with our poles and wires. It is our number-one priority, and quite frankly, nothing else that we do matters if we don't ensure the safety of everyone who comes in contact with our product and our equipment. The other is, is that reliability matters. It matters very deeply to you all as a county, to the businesses that operate. In our increasingly technological world, the residences expect 24/7, 365-day power without interruption. When I was growing up in Oregon, it was not uncommon to have, not just multi-day, but sometimes multi-week, power outages. I would fear for what would take place if we moved over a couple of days. It's a very different interconnected world, and we recognize how important reliability is. We also balance that with, all of those things, with affordability. 20% of the customers that we serve in general really struggle with their bills every month. This is a big deal, they make very real trade-offs between clothing for their children, medicines for their parents, and we recognize that we are essentially an essential service, and remaining affordable is critically important. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we move, and talk a little bit more about what's happening with regards to clean energy, to the impact of carbon on our climate, and what we as a company are doing about it. So as we take a look at really what we see is a changing world, when I began my professional career, working largely in the forest products industry, but in others, we very much looked at energy as, how do we use less? About that time, the Energy Trust of Oregon was created, and Oregon, as well as Portland General Electric, are national examples for high levels of energy efficiency and the reduced level of energy that each business or each residence uses that we serve. In fact, we have some of the most aggressive energy efficiency goals and results of any entity in the country. If you go back just a decade or more, after the energy efficiency period of focus, really we started focusing on renewables, and we started adding to that legacy hydro base that we have so enjoyed in Pacific Northwest, and began to really add in a lot of wind energy, some solar energy, even on a rainy day like this. And what we saw was is that for that to be cost-effective for customers, we relied as an industry on federal production tax credits and other sorts of subsidies. Clearly, the Betsy and other things came from the State of Oregon. Today, we see the phasing out of almost all of those subsidies, and one of the reasons they are phasing out is because we no longer are living in an ore world, where we're trading off reliability and cost-effectiveness for clean energy. The cost of implementing a new wind farm, for tying in solar panels, from tying in the entire west-wide grid and maximizing the renewable energy of the entire West for Portland General Electric customers, is now cost-effective, and in many cases, more cost-effective than fossil generation. And so, we're really in what I would call an "and" world, and that's because the cost of renewable development has dropped so significantly. It's also because the cost of communications have dropped so significantly, and we see computer systems that can integrate variable energy instantaneously, certainly within our service territory, but also west-wide, as we leverage the entire grid on the distribution level to the larger transmission west-wide level. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, because I think that that is a really important distinction from just a couple of years ago, when we were probably last building our last wind farm, the costs have declined so rapidly as we move forward in increasingly technological world. So, to take a step back, Portland General Electric has been committed to the environment pretty much for our entire history, but most specifically this past year, we came out with our clean energy vision, and clearly targeted just ahead of the state's goals. So our proportionate level of carbon reduction to meet the state's 2050 goals, we've committed to, which is largely an 80% reduction for us. We think this is very important, and personally, I wouldn't be surprised if we continue to move forward at a faster pace, given what we are increasingly learning about the impacts of global warming. What will happen as we took a look at energy overall, so traditionally, we as a utility have looked at the electric sector, and what we began to do is really say, what is our role as one of the largest energy companies in the State of Oregon in terms of all energy? And we worked with a group called Evolved Energy Research, which is the same group that presented in front of the United Nations on behalf of the US, to really understand, what does a deeply decarbonized economy look like? And one of the things that we knew but wasn't as top of mind was is that because of the advancements in the electric sector, we no longer are the largest emitting carbon source in the economy, but rather that it's transportation. And so, we're very much focused on enabling electric transportation, and we've seen some of the shifts that car companies like GM are making in terms of electric transportation, and we believe that this will only continue. Other areas that we've taken a look at are really being able to use electricity instead of other fossil fuels. Today, Portland General Electric's carbon footprint, we are 40% carbon-free, rapidly increasing that amount. But even at the 40%, electricity is the lowest carbon-intensive energy source that there is in our economy. And so, we see that we need to do three very specific things. We need to reduce the amount of carbon in our energy supply, we need to expand the use of electrification, and we continue to need to use less energy overall. And so, as we look forward a couple of decades, the energy sector across the country is about $1.2 trillion. That will probably decline over time to, let's say, a trillion dollars. But the energy component of that will probably go from about 23%, 25% on the electricity side, excuse me, to about 50%. So we will see as an economy dramatically greater uses of electricity while we're overall using less energy. And what that will mean is that an integrated, efficient electric grid becomes that much more important, particularly as we bring on increasing amounts of variable energy resources. So that really gets to the third area that we're focused on, and that is really having a smart, bidirectional grid that can be resilient and provide the lowest-cost energy. So what you have on this slide, on the left-hand side, is obviously a picture of the West, from British Columbia all the way through Arizona. And today, Portland General Electric's 15 generating facilities, our hydro operations, our thermal facilities, are all, as well as our wind facilities, are all integrated and dispatched in concert with generation west-wide. So today, while it might be pouring rain in the Pacific Northwest, it is most likely sunny in Arizona and Southern California, and we are importing excess solar energy today, and our customers are using that very low-cost excess solar energy, even though it's raining in our area. Last night, the wind blew quite significantly, and we curtailed the vast majority of our thermal resources, so we maximize that wind energy, because it tends to blow in the Pacific Northwest most frequently in the nighttime hours. So we're really balancing the entire west-wide grid with the most cost-effective energy resources, which is that has no marginal cost, which is obviously wind, solar, other hydro, particularly in the springtime and winter, and allow for a much more resilient, integrated system that lowers all costs for customers. As we move forward, what you'll see is the cost of technology continue to drop, and this integration that we have enjoyed west-wide will now take down to the distribution level. We will hook in many more people's businesses, homes, to be smarter and more interconnected. And so, this really is how one integrates in a reliable fashion, in a cost-effective fashion, and safely, all of the renewable resources that we'll see going forward. So, one of the things I wanted to make sure that you all appreciate is how important we take costs. This is a slide that comes directly from the Oregon Public Utility Commission, and it shows that Portland General Electric's prices have risen over the last decade, slightly less than inflation, about 2%, and they have risen less than any other utility. And we've done that at the same time that we have invested money into the system. So we have invested over $18 million in Marion County alone in just the last couple of years to make sure that we have adequate infrastructure, that we take care of aging equipment, and that our grid remains sustainable and reliable. In terms of energy resiliency and disaster recovery, I want to recognize the work that we've done with Ed Flick, your emergency manager. He's been invaluable to us as working with our business continuity staff and with others. We take that very seriously, we have reliability, not just during days when there's tough, but also during disasters, is critically important. We recognize that hospitals, public services, others, need the electricity that we produce to be able to recover from any significant natural disaster. We also look forward to continuing to work with you on streetlight conversion, and recognize that we have more to do with you in terms of streetlight implementation. And also, just a few stones to throw from here, we're working in Salem on an all-electric avenue, to be able to quickly advance electric mobility in the city, and then also are working with the Salem Transit Authority on electric buses as we move forward. We are, we have a program where municipalities, large customers, others, can buy 100% green energy, and we're just finishing that program up, and hope to get approval from the Oregon Public Utility Commission very shortly. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have, and I very much appreciate your allowing me to come this morning.
Sure.
Mr. Cameron.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Maria, for being here today, and Wendy, thanks for your service, and Teresa's, to get to serve on the Executive Council at SEDCorps with her, and really appreciate the involvement that PGE has in our community. The last slide you had there was electric avenue here in Salem. Can you give us a little more detail on what that looks like, or what that is?
Sure. Let me turn that over to Wendy. This is something that we're very proud of, it's a way of really kick-starting the excitement around electric vehicles. So Wendy, do you want to talk about where we are in the current discussion?
Yes. We need to get a microphone in front of you, Wendy, sorry.
No, that's perfect. I have two over there, but we don't. We are...
Our power bill's too high, we can't afford it.
Got to share. We are, we have established a location, and we are now in agreements, the property is part State of Oregon-owned and part City of Salem. So we have established a location by the Capitol, and what it will mean is there will be four charging units together by the Capitol that people will be able to, that people will be able to use, and the really great thing is that PGE is taking care of all of the costs of the installation, that's the commitment that Maria is talking about, our commitment to try to spark continued development in this area, so...
So it's basically charging stations for electric cars. There are some on the backside of the Capitol now, so you're, I assume these are going to be on the front side.
We're going to upgrade those backside because they have had ongoing issues, and so we're upgrading all of that equipment.
Okay. Another question was reliability matters, and I toured a battery, there was an experimental battery station here in Salem, I think I toured it like three or four years ago when it first went online. Can you talk about the evolution of battery storage even in the last few years, and how that's impacting the reliability issue?
That's a great question, and I hate to say it, but that facility now is probably yesterday's technology.
Right, I would assume.
And also yesterday's costs. What we've seen is very dramatic drop in the costs, as well as the energy intensity of battery storage. So we're able to store much more energy at much lower cost today than we were in the past. At Portland General Electric, we have a program for roughly about $40 million of additional battery storage on our system. We're going to put that in three different kinds of locations. The first is in connection with some of our generating facilities, to be able to maximize the very, very quick response that is needed for reliability. The second is at some of our substations, where we're able also to enhance reliability. And then the third is actually on the customer side, we'll be able to better understand the use of residential storage. So it's very important that we continue to move forward in understanding how battery storage becomes an integral part of our system. In the, in the rest of the country, you'll see battery storage used a little bit more differently than it has, than will be probably used in the Pacific Northwest. Much of our system is still hydro-based, and battery storage will not be able to solve the problem of a drought year, or several drought years. What it will be able to do is it will be able to, as we maximize the use of solar energy, let's say between 10 o'clock in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon, utilize wind energy, let's say, when the wind's blowing, but most predominantly in the evening, during those different periods when we need to enhance the use of renewables, we will have stored the excess solar or the excess wind energy, and then use that during the shoulder-shoulder periods when the wind might not be blowing, or the sun might not be shining quite as much. The other is, you'll begin to see battery storage connected with wind or solar generation that needs to use transmission lines to get to customer areas. So for example, the wind tends to blow the strongest on the eastern side of the state, and by putting some battery storage there, we'll be able to maximize the transmission line usage that we rely upon to get all of that renewable energy into areas like Marion County and Salem.
Great, thank you. And then probably two more, if I may. How about hydrogen and the hydrogen technology, is that something, I know it's really energy-intensive to store it, but is there any new ground there being broke?
There is tremendous exploration going on with regards to hydrogen technology. I'm probably not the best person to speak to the technical aspects of it, but I think as we look at just philosophically, in terms of a new and clean energy future, electricity is going to be really important in that future, but we're going to need a whole variety of solutions. So we really look at this as a way to look at what's most cost-effective, and not solely focus on certain technologies, but be technologically inclusive.
And then the last one, reliability, security of this grid that you just showed us, I mean, obviously that would be safety and security. What steps are being taken? It sounds like that there's some specific computers someplace that if I, in my dangerous technology ability, got into them, could destroy some things.
So, first of all, I think there's two types of security that we focus on, and they really are very much linked. The first, traditional physical security, and in today's world, we are constantly enhancing our physical security, and one can do that with a lot more cameras, electronic monitoring, and other things like that. The second is the entire world of cybersecurity that you're alluding to. We have significantly invested over the last couple of years in our cybersecurity capabilities, and today, we monitor all of our facilities on a 24/7 basis, and invest millions and millions of dollars into cybersecurity protection. We also air-gap and isolate certain of our key systems, and in addition to the 24/7 monitoring that we do, we have independent reviews, and we work very closely with Homeland Security, the FBI, and with other law enforcement to make sure that we understand as an industry and as a company, what the most significant threats are, and what are our most emerging threats. So this is a significantly growing area, and probably the largest increase we have of any cost item in our company right now.
Thank you. Just last comment, I appreciate the comment about the streetlights, and we have the East Salem Lighting District, and really appreciate your help in expediting and helping us get that implemented.
Absolutely.
We'll be talking more about that, so thank you very much.
We appreciate your concerns there.
Right, so, could you just elaborate a little bit, because the gentleman who's here is from Public Works, and I think he's the one that's actually had the contact with your representative about putting the streetlights in. So there is a contact person, and you're going to be reaching out to them and trying to help us figure out the best way to do this?
Yes, Chair Carlson, Wendy and I will both make sure that we get the right people to you, and move much more quickly on the streetlight implementation.
Great, okay, thank you. Jane, I think you had a question that you were going to ask about the Covanta negotiations that we're working on.
Yes, thank you. Marion County is working on a new waste service contract with Covanta, and Covanta recently completed a power purchase agreement with PGE. And so, the county asked Covanta to provide that PPA to the county, and we actually need this information to move forward on the contract. And so, Covanta said they don't have a problem providing it to us, but they needed PGE's permission. So their counsel wrote to PGE's legal department in September and asked for permission, and they never heard back. So Covanta invited us to contact PGE's legal department, which I did on October 31st, and I did get a reply back. The reply was, "We don't really want to give it to you, but can you tell us specifically what you're looking for?" I responded saying, "We'd like to see the whole thing, but in the alternative, if I could at least see an index of your contract, so I could pick key provisions," and then I haven't heard anything back. So I haven't heard anything back for a month. This is a very big contract for the county, solid waste management is a huge part of what the county does, and we were wondering if there was any way you could facilitate a response back from your legal department.
Absolutely, and first of all, I apologize for any delay in responding. Covanta is an important partner, it's an important generator of electricity. Obviously, the amount of solid municipal waste that you burn is incredibly impressive, and I can't speak to the specifics that you're raising, but I do promise that I will get back to you and make sure that you get the answers that you need in a timely fashion.
Thank you very much.
So thank you for raising it.
Great, thank you. So I just have just a few questions to wrap up here. First of all, not a question, but I want to thank Wendy for her partnership over the years. We have just been able to work on so many projects together, and the one that we started with, I think, was the Marion County Fair, which I was, have been involved with for many, many years, and PGE has been a sponsor of that fair for many years, and Wendy, from when she's able, has come and participated in our sponsors and legislative mayor, big dinner that we have. When I was a state representative back in 2001, too, I was invited to this dinner, and there were, actually, I think besides the Fair Board, three of us, Jackie Winters, Dan Doyle, and me, that attended, that was it. And now we have over 100 people that come, it's a really big event, so I appreciate you for being part of that. I wanted to ask you a little bit about, because you mentioned in terms of affordability for people, and I work a lot in the area of mental health and community corrections, and some of the other areas where people are struggling to make ends meet, and I've heard a lot of stories, I've been involved with community action, they have the Energy Assistance Program. What I've heard is, even though the state has expanded that a bit, it opens up, and then it's just kind of gone, right, after a certain period of time? And sometimes folks have to make decisions about whether or not they're going to pay their rent, or pay their utilities, and stories about prescriptions spoiling in the refrigerator and that kind of thing. So I know that there's a program, I've contributed to it every year, I just can't think of the name of it, where people can actually provide contributions, and then PGE actually helps use that to expand energy assistance. You still have that, right?
So I think that you're probably referring to Oregon Heat.
Yes.
So Oregon Heat is a program that we participate in, we contribute to, we frequently include bill inserts for customers to be able to also participate, and then that, then they allocate the funds.
Right.
So, it's a terrific program, it works very well, and you're right, there are never enough resources for all of the needs that are out there. And at Portland General, we've worked not only in a very concerted way to keep our bills low, but we are also providing payment options, so that people can choose the dates when they pay their bills, they can have sort of equal pay plans, and trying to have as many things to be able to meet people's needs as we possibly can.
Thank you. And I'm just thinking... And I'm just thinking, it's the holiday season now and a lot of times people are looking for a charitable place to give funding and that is certainly, I think, a very worthy cause to.
It is. It's a terrific organization.
Now, totally different topic, talking about renewable energy and that type of thing. What is the status of hydro? It's like, it's almost like hydro is in some ways fallen out of favor, it feels like a little bit. And I was born and raised in Oregon and sang songs in grade school about, you know, water and "Roll on Columbia, roll on." So where, where does that fit within? You've talked about wind and you talk about solar and so on. Is, is PGE still happy with hydro? Or are you trying to ease out of it or kind of what's the perspective on that?
So hydro really is the bedrock of, of not only our system at Portland General, but really the entire system in the West. We work very collaboratively with Bonneville Power Administration and many others. In total, today, hydro, we operate facilities on the Clackamas River and on the Dischutes. They're very significant facilities. Our Clackamas projects were some of the oldest electric generator units in the entire West. And you will also see on the Dischutes, we have a terrific partnership with the Confederate Tribes of the Warm Springs. We have, on total, hydro is about 25% of our system. We have some additional contracts that are going to be coming on that we've entered into with Bonneville Power Administration. To be able to use hydro is a really important backup resource because it is one of the only storable sources of energy that we have behind our dams. So we work very collaboratively with them as well as, we do buy a lot of power from Idaho, from Washington, and additional hydro resources as well as from British Columbia. Citing a new hydro facility is, would be extraordinarily complicated in today's world, but what we have done is we have increased some of our hydro output and we've made it much more low impact. So we've invested millions of dollars in protecting fish and wildlife along our hydro facilities, both on the Clackamas and on the Dischutes River. But it's, we, I think we should not, as a region, underappreciate the natural resources that we've inherited.
That, that was just like, that was it when I was a kid. I just wanted to make sure we're still good. Thank you very much. And then the other comment that I wanted to make was on the reliability piece of it and just, we've only had one power outage that I can recall in 16 years that I've been here as a commissioner. But I remember it vividly and it happened in an afternoon and computers didn't work, phone didn't work, everybody kind of sat around, elevators didn't work, the electronic buttons didn't work on the doors, and we kind of let everybody go home. I mean, people couldn't do work. It's just amazing, when you think about it, how much we rely on that reliable stream of energy. So again, just underscoring your comments about the importance of that in terms of the business world and our world and, and government as, as, as our business that we're performing services for our customers.
Very much so. And first of all, not to have had a, had one power outage in 16 years, that's a good record. Should our record not be so good, one of the things that you should know is, is that we work very collaboratively with your emergency responders and others to make sure that when we do have a power outage, we are restoring those systems which need to be restored first for human safety and health. So hospitals would be high on the priority list and we have a very specific ranking of how we deploy resources very quickly in outages or in particular in disasters or in, in high wind events where we tend to see many more trees come down and have more outages to make sure that critical facilities are restored first. Thank you so much.
Any additional questions?
Just, just the one that made me think about the service that you give, but the challenges that you have, workforce challenges. In fact, a, a young man that I was mentoring when I was at the state legislature, he is now doing tree trimming, et cetera, because he wants to become one of your service people. So what, what workforce type things are you doing within the community or in the state to help develop your own workforce?
So that's, let me, let me take it, answer the question and I'll ask Wendy to, to address some things as well that are more specific to the area here. First of all, we as a utility and as other utilities, we have great jobs. We have terrific family wage jobs. We are hiring linemen right now. We cannot find enough people who are qualified linemen. We have a terrific apprentice program and we do our own training program as well. So we really invest in the growth of employees and whatnot. It is not uncommon that many people start on the tree trimming area and then move right into line work. And it can be a terrific career and it, and it pays well, quite frankly. We are working collaboratively with the IBW, our union, as well as many schools, in particular Portland State, Chameka College, Community College and others. But it is, it's a constant struggle to find the people who are interested in our field. And then the other area that we are also constantly hiring, you meant, you asked me the question on cybersecurity, we have a number of openings in that area as well as across our information technology area. Let me turn to Wendy, you can answer a few more questions because we really take a lot of pride in the investment we make in our employees.
Just a little bit more about what we're doing here in Marion County and where PGE has invested both people and resources, contributions to the Salem-Kaiser Career Technical High School. So that is, we are, we have employees who are going in and talking on a variety of issues and we, we are strong supporters of that program and grateful that we were asked to, to participate in helping that, that program grow. The other piece that we're also doing right now is we do offer scholarships, but we are also in discussions with Chameka Community College to, they've asked us what type of programs can we work together on to, again, support both the community here that are looking to make a connection with PGE. So we're in more conversations with them currently right now. We've had two meetings at least about what does that look like here and what does it look like for support from PGE. So those are, those are three examples that I could think of at the top of my head.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, really appreciate you coming down here today and meeting with us and enjoyed your presentation, enjoyed meeting you and thank you again for all of the work that you do for our community.
Well, thank you for having us. And Chair Carlson, I'd like to particularly thank you for your extensive service, not only to Marion County, but to our entire state. And it's a pleasure to present in front of you. So thank you very much. And congratulations.
Thanks. All right. We skipped over public comment. However, there was no one signed up for public comment and looking through the audience, I'm thinking that everybody's here for the public hearing, right? No one wanting to make public comment.
Yeah, so I'll do this.
So we will, we need to add a motion to the consent agenda.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll move that we add to the consent agenda order 18-122, consider approval of an order appointing Dennis Mansfield as the interim Public Works Director and Interim Emergency Management Director.
All right, and I will second your motion because Commissioner Brantner is not here to do that, he is ill today. So this is a motion to add this item to.
Our consent.
The consent agenda. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now that we have three items on the consent agenda, Commissioner Cameron, you will move that agenda forward?
Yeah, I'm sure Commissioner is watching though.
I'm sure he is, on FaceTime Live.
He's probably making sure we don't say anything bad about him. What are you laughing at, Brian? Okay, Madam Chair, I'll move the consent calendar under Business Services, approve a recommendation to uphold pay grades and updates for 10 classifications. Code number 042, Electronics Clerk. Number 312, Survey Technician 1. Number 313, Survey Technician 2. Number 317, Survey Technician 3. Number 6, 361, Loss Control Manager. Number 441, Right-Away Agent. Number 495, Building Maintenance Specialist Senior. Number 559, Occupational Therapy Specialist. Number 637, Support Enforcement Agent 1. And number 638, Support Enforcement Agent 2. Also under Business Services, approve a recommendation to adjust upward pay grades and updates for five classifications. Code number 0007, like that one. Elections and Recording Manager. Number 455, Dispatch Center Coordinator. Number 483, Building Maintenance Specialist. And number 531, Behavioral Health Aid. And number 5, or 931, Law Clerk. Also under consent, the one we just added, is to consider approval of an order appointing Dennis Mansfield as the interim Public Works Director and Interim Emergency Management Director.
Okay, so the third one actually is, we're not just considering it, we're approving it, right?
Right.
Right, okay. So we have.
I'm going to consider it.
We'll just approve it. All right. So we have those three items. I will second your motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, those items are approved. Now we have two items under action today, both under Public Works, both with Joe Fenimore, you're the man of the hour, Joe. The first one is to receive and consider appeal of a hearings officer's decision approving conditional use 18-0020 Williams Acres Solar LLC.
Good morning Commissioners, for the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is a request for a conditional use to establish a solar power generating facility on a 12-acre portion of a 30-acre parcel in an exclusive farm use zone. Marion County Hearings Officer conducted a public hearing on the application on April 17th, 2018. On October 29th, issued a decision approving the request. On November 13th, the hearings officer's decision was appealed to the board. The appeal was filed by a neighboring property owner who disagrees with the hearings officer's decision. The document filed with the county clerk by the appellant is a copy of the hearings officer's decision with some notes written in the margins and some underlying words. The appeal does not include any additional argument or evidence, therefore staff is unable to determine the basis for the appeal. The board has the options of accepting the appeal, remanding the matter back to the hearings officer, accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing, which is a suggested hearing date of December 12th or later, deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision approving the request. Due to the lack of information in the appeal, staff recommends option three, that the board deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision approving the request. Also, the 150-day decision-making deadline is up on December 4th. I have contacted the attorney for the appellant, or for the applicant, requesting an extension to the deadline. They want to defer that decision until after you make your decision on whether to accept the appeal.
So I've got a couple of questions. First question is, so this solar application was approved prior to when we put the moratorium on and had the work group and all of that is that, so this is one of those that's coming through?
This, this is the last one.
Okay, that, under the old rules.
Correct.
Okay. And so then, there was no letter, there was no, and they have an attorney? I'm not, I'm not getting this, I guess.
I, there was an email exchange between myself and one of the neighbors. I explained that you need to submit information or evidence, or you believe the hearings officer was wrong. I also, I did an email exchange with Roger Cave, a forensic lawyer of Marion County, the same, the same information I provided you. This, this is the kind of stuff you need for the, for the appeal. And that's all they submitted, was that decision that you have.
Okay. So what we have in front of us, that's it? There's nothing?
That's what the court received.
No emails that they sent that would give us any more enlightenment in terms of what their concerns are?
Correct.
All right. And I just scrolled through the handwritten notes and there was a, a question, very limited, got wrong, won't create negative impacts on agricultural operations. So to what extent did the hearings officer or evidence was presented to show that it wouldn't create negative impacts? Are there, is there information?
So the item you're looking at is actually one of the criteria.
I guess number 13, onsite agricultural use impacts?
Let's see.
Looks like there, looks like there was some testimony on that.
It's on page, page eight on the order, is that what you're looking at?
So is the person who testified the same person that appealed? Is that, I'm questioning?
Not sure.
Okay. So already testified and the hearings officer still granted it even with that testimony?
Correct. And I believe the item you're looking for were on 11, two, I think is addressed on item 13 on page 10.
Right, I'm looking at item 13, right. So, and I was just questioning whether or not then the person who, it says Matt Bush testified that the farm fields have been farmed in conjunction with the Family Farm Line for 35 years. This is the same gentleman that filed the appeal, is that correct?
Correct.
And so he had an opportunity to participate in the hearing with the hearings officer?
Correct.
Correct, okay. All right, those were my questions.
Well, this topic is still coming at us. So this is, this has been approved by the hearings officer. There's no new information to go back on. And I know we're dealing with this topic on a broader scale. So Madam Chair, if you're ready, I will, I will move that we, item number three, let me go back here to, to the staff's recommendation. Get this right. Madam Chair, I'll move that we deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision approving the request.
Okay, I'll second your motion. No discussion? I think we already had our discussion on that, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. So then the next item is to consider adoption of an administrative ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan amendment conditional use ZCCPCU, case number 18001 McAllen Powder LLC.
Once again, for the record, Joe Fenimore, this item is a request to amend the comprehensive plan designation and change the zone from special agricultural to industrial with an exception to statewide planning goal three on two 1-acre portions of a 79-acre parcel and then a conditional use for explosive storage facility on the resulting industrialized zone portions of the property. The hearings officer held a public hearing on this application on March 21st, 2018. On September 29th, issued a recommendation that the request be approved if additional sufficient information was provided by the applicant. The board held a public hearing on October 24th when the applicant submitted additional information and evidence and testimony. After considering all the information and evidence in the record, the board approved the request subject to conditions. The conditions require the applicant to obtain all required permits, provide proof of sheriff office coordination, have the site plan reviewed and approved by the Trevor Fire District. Also, the containers must be barricaded and placed on a cleared gravel area. There are also limits on the amount of explosives that can be stored at the facility. The ordinance and findings have been prepared and notice of adoption was given on November 21st. The ordinance is now set for formal adoption. The board has the options of adopting the ordinance as written, direct staff to repair or modify the ordinance, or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. Staff recommends the board adopt the ordinance as written and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So I think I was not here during this hearing, but this is the one I watched on FaceTime Live.
Yeah, we.
And it looked like the various evidence that the board approved that and so now we're at the place where we're just bringing forward the final paperwork.
Right. And, and the business owners were here, they testified about all the safety precautions and the roads and all that. So this is just a follow-up to that. Yeah, it was pretty thorough. So if you'd like, I'd just go ahead and make a motion to adopt, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt administrative ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan amendment conditional use ZCCPCU, case number 18001 McAllen Powder LLC.
All right, and I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to our public hearings. It's 20 minutes past 9:30, so we've noticed them, we have both of them under Public Works. The first one is a public hearing to consider approval of the franchise agreement between Marion County and the Marion Resource Recovery Facility LLC, more commonly known as the MRF. And we have Brian May, Dennis, oh, we have Kevin Hines, Dennis, you're not going over there? Your name's on the agenda. All right, Brian and Kevin, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, Brian May, Public Works, Environmental Services Division Manager. And with me today.
For the record, Kevin Hines with Marion Resource Recovery Facility.
And Dennis is bat and cleanup for us if we need additional help and support here this morning. So let's pick on Dennis' morning, appreciate it. So what I'd like to do today is provide you a little bit of background on the Marion Resource Recovery Facility and then highlight some of the key changes within the franchise agreement that we're proposing. And then Kevin will have a short little presentation after that. As far as. As far as background, the MRF has been an integral part of our integrated solid waste system. We've been actually working on this renewal for over a year. We've had it in front of our SWAMAC, our Solid Waste Management Advisory Council, which was fantastic. They, they had a good look at what we're doing, what we're trying to do, and kind of set our goals for the future is what we're looking for, for, for our system and how the MRF plays a key role in that. The conditions today, we've seen considerably increased generation of solid waste. We have Cavanta running at full capacity just on Marion County materials, and then our transfer stations are growing significantly at ten percent year over year for the last three years. And then we also have the need to recover more material with all the construction happening in, in the county, the MRF provides a very key portion of that. A little history on the MRF, it opened in April of two thousand specifically to address construction and demolition. In its first year in two thousand and one, it actually processed just a little over twenty-eight thousand, five hundred tons. Sounds big until you fast forward to last year where they handled over a hundred and fifty-eight thousand tons. Fast forwarding to this year, and we're projecting that number to be closer to a hundred and seventy-two thousand tons. So again, a very key portion of, of what we have. The portion that has changed and expanded is the need within the county to have a reload of our recycled materials to go to different markets, yard debris and food waste processing to outside, and then again, wood is a big component in the processing that they do at. The MRF is, is critical for our recovery, where they actually processed over fifteen thousand tons of wood this last year. So kind of going back to wanting to keep the goal of flexibility of our system, the new pieces we've added to the franchise agreement are, are kind of key with some main definitions, one being the definition of a public hauler. When the facility received its first franchise agreement, it's specifically for the haulers, the franchise haulers to go to the facility. We have not really had an outlet for recovery of construction and demolition from third party or public haulers. With the new definition, we'll allow that authority to happen based on Marion County Public Works granting that to the MRF to take in large projects or even set customers, which will help our, our recovery rates. Residuals management, and again, this definition is more to deal with what comes out the back end of the MRF and what's been processed, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit later as I go through this. The term of the agreement is set on page three, section five, is to a twenty-year fixed term. Some people may be familiar with our collection franchises where they're more of a rolling seven. Our facilities are allowed to have just a maximum of twenty years. We wanted to extend that to a twenty-year term for the MRF because of the, the need for this growth and expansion and their ability to do so, so that'll help them with some financing and expansion opportunities. Page three, section ten, again, addresses the public hauler standpoint of being able to increase recovery by addressing a lot of that waste that we're actually having to divert outside of the, of the system. Page five, section seventeen, kind of deals directly with the types of materials and the rates. We kind of really want to focus on that waste hierarchy with the best use of the material. This will help direct our transfer station materials to the MRF to be processed, and we're doing that today, and this just formalizes that arrangement. We should see definitely increased recovery, which is going to help us with some of our, our trying times on recycle front. Page five, section eighteen, residual materials, I mentioned the new definition. In the past, the agreement was set up where there was more front-end requirements as far as material coming into the facility had to meet a, a high recoverable standard of thirty percent or more. The problem in today, we, when we look at the loads that come in, we want to actually address those twenty percent recoverable loads, even the ten percent recoverable loads, so we can get as much material out of the system and kind of reduce that impact on Cavanta at the same time, and increase our recovery rates. So by shifting to residual materials, we're going to test the back end and make sure that the MRF is actually processing the material thoroughly and that the residual that's left is what's destined for final disposal. Should improve again our recovery rates and then take some burden off of Cavanta at the same time. Section six, or page six, section twenty, rates and fees, we've attached exhibit A to kind of put a formal discussion to our rate structure. These rates are set by the county and are set at our transfer stations and other facilities, but what that allows for the MRF to do is if they see a, a contract or a large demolition project, they're able to utilize those rates and actually come under as an incentive if necessary, but this just gives that, that marker for future, and then we actually have a chance to look at this and review it. Another piece that I skipped through that was brought up by our SWAMAC was the ability to kind of adapt and expand back to that flexibility piece, where we'll have annual reviews looking at flows, material types, you know, operations to make sure that we're addressing anything that may be new or recently, like the recoverable materials and what changes in the market based on what's happening on, on market conditions. Section thirty-six on page eight, again, addresses flow because of our contractual obligations with Cavanta. If we do need material to, to keep Cavanta at capacity, this just allows us to pull material back from the MRF after it's been processed, some more of that residual material that would be back into supplement activity. We have not had to do that since early two thousand and sixteen, so we don't anticipate that happening with the growth we've experienced, but at this point, I'll hand it over to Kevin.
All right, thank you, Brian. I think Brian did a great job of summarizing the franchise agreement and hitting, excuse me, hitting the high points. I, you know, I just want to say I want to thank the, Brian and his staff for working on this. As he stated, we've, we've been through this process for several months or up to a year now, so it, it's been very good, good working with them. I think this is a great long-term agreement for us. It, it allows us to hit some of our statewide goals, which we know are very aggressive over the next several years, and I think the ability to have this long-term franchise agreement working with Marion County and the MRF allows us to work towards hitting those goals. We've had a great partnership for the last twenty years. Hopefully look forward to the next twenty. So, you know, I just, I just want to thank you for being here today and consideration for this proposal. So thank you.
All right, at this point, based on our review, Public Works staff recommends the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed franchise renewal with Marion County Resource Recovery Facility LLC.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation.
So just wanted to ask, is there, there, no one signed up on here for this part of the public hearing, so is there anyone out there that wanted to testify on the MRF contract? Okay, so, and let me ask Kevin, so we've been having some discussions over time before the China debacle and since then about the role of the MRF or an expanded MRF in helping us with some of these recycling issues. So would you maybe just, I know, I realize that this contract really isn't about that per se, right? But is it, or kind of where are we headed in the future?
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, so it certainly, it certainly helps us. We are in the process of looking at expanding our facility. Right now, as Brian stated, we've been there since ninety-nine, two thousand, twenty-eight thousand tons a year then, a hundred and sixty thousand. We need to expand. We know that that's going to grow over the course of the next twenty years. So with the expansion is going to allow us to be a lot more efficient, and it's going to allow us to bring in some equipment that will help us recover more materials at a higher rate. So our goal is, once we go through this expansion, to be able to recover almost twice as amount, the amount of what we're doing right now. So, yeah, so it is definitely important, it does touch on our expansion.
So it kind of sets the stage for that then, is what you're saying? That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the ten percent number you mentioned, Brian, going down, was it twenty or thirty percent before?
So that's kind of an average between our two transfer stations for the growth. We've seen North Marion increasing at actually closer to twenty percent.
No, excuse me, maybe my question, was the recovery, the, the sample-
The sam-
The sampling, so the ten percent is, just so I can, you know, hamburger flipper here in layman's terms, ten percent of bad materials that wasn't taken, or potential recoverable materials is still left in the sample when it comes out of the MRF?
Correct.
So you're lowering that from twenty down to thirteen?
Yeah, so what we saw is the sampling was actually on the front end that required that load to have at least thirty percent of that load to be recovered. So what we've shifted to is now that that load comes in through the facility, we're testing the back end, and of that sample, it has to be less than ten percent of good materials.
So when I was standing at the MRF watching the stuff come off the conveyor belt and there was like a snowboard in there and some other stuff-
Correct.
So, so you're going to test that pile and see if there was less than ten percent recoverable material left?
Correct.
So you gotta get more efficient on pulling stuff out?
Yep.
So, okay, I understand that. So then the other question would be, and I was, I was in California not too long ago and, and at this complex where they said they just throw everything in the garbage and then they have a facility that takes the garbage and dumps it and sorts it? Is that true? Is there facilities out there where they're just, instead of a blue bin, they're actually just picking up a garbage can?
Depends on who you talk to and, and who's giving the tour. From a residential standpoint, that's, it's very hard to achieve that.
This was not residential, this was an apartment complex, I think.
Right, right. So when we talk about commercial or multifamily, definitely, there's technology out there that can take that way, especially if we've kind of segregated the dry materials and the wet materials before it's processed. It makes it much easier to recover the paper, the cardboard, metals, et cetera, from that system. So that's, that's something we're looking forward to in the future.
I just thought, I couldn't believe it, because I knew what was going in the garbage can, and I go, really?
Really.
They're going to, they're going to take the bottles and cans and everything out of this with food waste and it was, I just didn't know. I know there's other technologies out there, but if it's gotten to that point yet.
And usually with the residual that's coming out of that, it's heavy in the food waste, and they're looking for some form of digester to process that material further, and so it's, it's not necessarily done when they've finished with it in that form of facility, so there's additional processing needed.
Of course, I didn't ask them what their garbage rates were in Southern California either. I'm sure they're-
A little, little higher.
Ready for a motion?
Well, yeah, I guess if we don't have anybody testifying, we can close the public hearing and have a motion to approve.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing and approve a franchise agreement between Marion County and Marion Resource Recovery Facility LLC.
And I will second your motion, and I did have one more question, just, I forgot it and then I remembered it again. So I saw something on social media, speaking of cardboard and residual, I was just like kind of milling that in my mind, about the fact that so, you know, our habits have shifted so much to online shopping, and that involves a whole lot of cardboard boxes, and the comment was that we need your boxes back, you know, like because we need to be able to repurpose or recycle or whatever. Are we seeing that locally too in terms of like a high demand for cardboard, given what we're seeing with Amazon and some of these other companies that are doing online? Do we know?
Do you want to talk about market?
Well, yeah, last night at our, at our SWAMAC meeting, Brian presented the draft version of our, our recovery rates, and you can see that cardboard went up significantly on the how much that, how much that was, but we are definitely seeing more cardboard into the system now because of those types of companies.
Are we seeing the, like a, like a gap, like a gap or a need or a demand for that cardboard in terms of, of the, the market? Is the price, are we, or I was just curious if that's a local thing or just somewhere else?
No, we're, no, we definitely are, and we're taking that, that material, that cardboard locally. We're, we have those mills domestically that we can take the cardboard to.
Okay, great, all right.
Yeah.
Thanks, just curious.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so contract is approved, thanks, keep us posted on how things are going, okay?
We will, thank you.
All right, so our second public hearing under public works is a public hearing to consider an increase in the solid waste collection rates charged by the franchise haulers. And Brian, your name's on this, are you starting?
Yes, sir. We'd like to talk to the-
Yeah, let's put that up, and Estelle, are you first?
Actually, Reed is going to go first.
Okay, and then there are only three people signed up, Estelle Reed and Michael Brickley. Did anyone else want to sign up for this public hearing? Are you just all here to watch? All right, I'll ask that question again when we're done with the folks that have signed Oh, look at that. You guys are so technological. Good job. All right. So Brian, you're going to kick this up?
Yeah.
I'll spill your mic back. Our garbage rates are too high and we can't afford two microphones.
[laughing]
I thought it was the power rates, but now it's changed.
There you go. So introduce, for the record again, Brian May, Public Works Environmental Services Division Manager. Kind of before you today, we'll have our discussion on our annual cost of service analysis, and there's a couple of key components to that, so really what I'll do is I'll let Reed introduce himself and kind of provide a little presentation that will kind of add some context to what we'll be going into as we discuss the actual COSA.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Reed Carlson. I'm the Marketing and Recycling Coordinator for Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association. So one of my roles is to go out and communicate about recycling to citizens of Marion County, specifically the curbside recycling program. So this is a portion of my presentation that I'll be sharing, it's very shortened, however, there is a few questions that have been going on before the recycling changes earlier this year. So one of the questions we have often is what does curbside recycling actually look like? What do the drivers see when they're dumping carts? And then lastly, what are the plastics that I can actually recycle now at the curbside level? So I've collected a few pictures from a, a local recycling company, and as you can see, there's arrows outlining the contaminants, and these have never been allowed in this slide, ever in the mixed recycling roll cart. First off is film plastic, and the second is glass bottles. Glass bottles are perfectly recyclable if they're put in the small red recycling bin next to the cart. And the film plastics, as you can see, the Amazon is moving towards these plastic envelopes. So the next slide is this cardboard container. If the cardboard didn't have the styrofoam inside or the plastic window, then it would be perfectly recyclable, but right now all of that together is considered a contaminant because these items aren't going to be easily separated. But if you do remove that plastic window and the plastic, the styrofoam, that cardboard box is perfectly recyclable.
And take the styrofoam to the Marion County Juvenile Department where you can just put it in that little bin.
In this last cart, we have food, which has never been allowed in the mixed recycling paper plates, it's not the right type of fiber. This is plastic hanger, even though it is plastic, it's considered a non-programmed plastic, meaning it's not a bottle or a jug, and then that laminated sheet of paper is just a plastic sheet at this point, and the paper can't be recovered easily enough. So here's a video of a, what you see at the, what the drivers see when they're tipping a cart into the mixed recycling, and it's not available. All right, so this is a video that is not working currently, unfortunately, but I can get that to you at a future time. And what you'll see is, this is the only time that you can see the bottom portion of the, the cart of what is actually ending up in the recycling.
I think you have to connect the video to the PowerPoint. Do you have the video on your, on your flash drive or just the PowerPoint?
It's usually just in the PowerPoint, unfortunately.
Yeah, we had that problem at our breakfast, and you have to actually connect the two of them. It's okay.
So-
We believe you.
To the show and tell portion. So these are the plastic items that are acceptable. These are jugs, as you can see, the openings are smaller than the base, and then jugs typically have handles, so these are recyclable.
Do you want the caps or not the caps on them?
No caps on any of the plastic items.
Really?
Or any sort of dispensing liquid. So laundry detergent typically has the little spout, anything like that needs to be removed. These are examples of bottles, the, the openings are again smaller than the, the base themselves, so these are the plastics that are allowed. The recent changes are tubs and jars. Jars have openings that are around the same size as the base, and peanut butter and mayonnaise jars are the most common jars that we see, and they're really hard to clean out, a lot of food residue. Tubs have larger openings than the base, and this is a combination of the two, and a lot of times people will stack plastic containers together, and when these get crushed, it's really hard to get them separated, and they might have different, different plastics, so it's really important to make sure that we're not recycling these at a curbside level anymore.
Wow.
And then these are just examples of confusing fibers, so this is the Amaz- So this is the Amazon paper envelope and it has the, the plastic on the inside. And it has a water barrier that makes it non-recoverable. This is a plastic material that can't be recycled unless it's separated. And this is still perfect cardboard or grayboard. And that concludes my quick presentation about recycling.
Very good, thank you. So, would you talk a little, I'm sorry, can I just ask one question though? So since you didn't show the video, could you, could you just kind of describe what the driver sees and, uh, uh, and also I know that there are, have been some contamination fees that have been attached that, I'm, I'm going out to the East Salem, uh, Suburban Neighborhood Association. Uh, is it Thursday night that we're having the meeting? Or is it next week?
Next, next week.
Next week, next Thursday. And so there, there'll be those questions there as well. So, uh, can you just talk about that a little bit?
The contamination fees or?
Well, just what the driver sees because from what I understood from Art's presentation, it's not like you're charging for everything. It's like some specific things. And they're saying, so how do you know that there's this stuff in my recycle bin without taking pictures individually of each one, which you don't do?
Right, so this video shows a cart being dumped and there's a, a large piece of film plastic. And film plastic is very easy to identify in this video, uh, styrofoam as well. And that's mainly the items that they're focusing on. But we do want to make sure that we're using that opportunity of the contamination fee as a education opportunity because we want to make sure that anybody who wants to recycle properly can easily find a way to do so and isn't confused about any sort of rules. Uh, because these film plastics and styrofoams have never been allowed. A lot of people are getting confused about what recently changed and what's never, uh, been allowed in the curbside recycling. So this is just a snapshot, unfortunately. And as you can see, the material doesn't go away immediately. It kind of gets pushed around just a little bit until it settles and compacts, uh, in the compactor. So that's really what they're looking at whenever they're, they're dumping carts in.
Would it be possible for us to get a copy of the video, maybe put it on the website if people wanted to look at it? Might we do that? Okay, any questions?
Yeah, um, confusion, obviously. I'm easily confused. Just ask John. I, I'm confused. Why, why the larger, um, openings are not? Was that a nut jar? What was the one, the big one?
So this is a peanut jar.
Okay, yeah, peanut jar. Why is that not recyclable?
It can still have food residue stuck inside. Also, like I said, other items can fall in to this jar because it has a large opening. And even if there's two perfectly recyclable items, if this gets crushed in the compactor and you have paper inside this plastic or two different types of plastic, then it's going to be really hard to separate those with how much material is processed.
Had I run that peanut jar through my dishwasher when I did a load of dishes, is it recyclable?
Currently, in the Marion County, County Curbside Program, no. We're only accepting the bottles and jugs. So there's a few different reasons about why we aren't accepting them. Uh, some of them are, there's a lot of different shapes and it, it's hard to make rules. There's a couple of different types of plastics that can be easily confused. Food contamination is another big one because when food contaminants get on other recyclable paper, uh, that makes it a lot less lower quality and contaminated itself. So while a lot of people are great about cleaning the, their recyclables, there's enough people that, that can ruin a, a cart or two.
What's the red jug?
Uh, laundry detergent.
Okay, but taking off the lid?
Yes, all lids.
And making sure it's rinsed out well, right?
Yeah. And dry.
Oh, but it's, it's nice, it's got nice and clean stuff, so it will help clean everything.
It's a chemical.
I, you know,
Household hazardous waste chemical.
I can understand why there's confusion out there. I, I try to, you know, try to do this right and even this weekend I had guests and, uh, they were asking me, well, Dad, can we put this in the recycle bin? And I'm thinking it was like a peanut jar and I washed it and I said, yeah. So I gotta go back and pull that out before I get fined.
Well, you know, one of the things that I tell people when I'm trying to explain it is it's not so much whether it's recyclable or not because many things are recyclable. It really is what the machines are and the processing in our particular location. So it has to work with the equipment that we have. And when I say that, then they're like, oh, okay, you know, but I, I think we're so used to the idea of there's a triangle on the bottom and it's got a number and therefore, you know, I can just throw it in. Or it's plastic, it's a hanger or whatever, I can just throw it in. And we, uh, we're not thinking about what happens to it after we throw it in.
Absolutely. And that's really what I'm trying to highlight when I, whenever I go out to present at these clubs. It's really important to understand that when the cart goes away, there's still a lot of processing that needs to be done. Whether it's hauling it to the processors, the processors actually processing it, the employees within the processors sorting that out manually and with machines. There's, there's a lot.
Can you talk about the market for the plastics? Okay, so you get a clean, you get those three things there that, and it comes in and, uh, where's it go? What happens to it?
Unfortunately, I personally don't have information about that at this time.
I need to go back and do a Masters Recycling class again.
Do we have someone here that can answer that question? Will.
Will.
Now, Will, I think it's been less than 24 hours since I've seen you. Almost less than 12. We had a, uh, Solid Waste Management Advisory Council meeting last night.
Yes, um, hi, I'm Will Postgate. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Garten Services, who is one of the processors for the Marion County material. Um, the plastics, those particular plastics have a good market and, uh, particularly the HD Natural, which is your milk, your opaque milk, plastic milk jugs, um, and your PET, which is your water bottles. Uh, those two have, uh, good markets, still pay, um, good money for them. The, uh, HD Colored, which is the same material, which is that, um, detergent bottle, is the same material as the milk jug. It just is with dye. Not as, um, not much money in it because of the dye, but it's still marketable. Um, and so that's the main reason why we accept those because there's still money to be had in that, in those materials.
And I guess my question is will, what, where does it go? Is, is it, is it domestic, uh, or is it still going overseas or, or the processing?
It is, uh, and it does change periodically. I know China is, is not buying it. Some goes, uh, uh, domestic and I believe some goes, uh, internationally. But I can double check on that for you. Because it does change periodically. We try to get the best price.
And then they chop it up and process it and put it back in the recycle?
Put it into flakes and, and make it into what it, uh, make it again into what it was. So.
Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Yes, John.
I could ask a question. What happens if you get one of those, uh, large laundry, uh, jugs that, uh, they haven't rinsed out the soap because it's hard to rinse out the soap?
Uh, well,
The remaining soap.
The trouble is that we can't pick one out that we see has soap in it, just like we can't pick a peanut butter jar out that just looks like it's a little bit, uh, dirty. Generally, they get picked out and they get put with everything else and, and it's, it's a contaminant. So, uh, that is why we ask everybody to rinse clean and dry. Um, it's very hard. People think, well, I think that's why people put bowling balls and, and other things in the cart. They think, well, they'll catch this and be able to do something with it because they don't feel like they should throw it away. So they just want to, they, they, they think they should just put it in there because then we'll figure it out. Well, that belt is going by fairly fast and you're not gonna pull every little thing out, so.
So if you don't rinse it out, then you gotta throw it away?
Yes. Please do. Otherwise it could contaminate, uh, an entire load and not make it marketable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Estelle, your turn.
All right, so we'll move forward here. Um, as part of the, uh, presentation, I'd like to kind of give an overview of the cost of service analysis and then summarize the data, uh, based on the rate requests. And again, you'll understand the importance of what was presented by Reed and Will. Um, so each year, the franchise garbage haulers of Marion County go through a, an in-depth cost analysis that we refer to as the COSA. And this analysis looks at historical, financial and statistical data as well as future trends based on certain assumptions, whether it's inflationary factors, um, uh, that are known or unknown. And also looks at, uh, future things like we experienced in 2016 with a known tip fee increase for disposal. Um, each hauler presents her material to Estelle Harland, who does an extensive review. And then Estelle provides that information to the Haulers Association's Certified Public Accountant, Dan Porth. Dan also summarizes all the information of all the others, haulers into one cost of service analysis report uh, that is then turned over to the county. Um, the representation of the county is myself and Dennis Mansfield. We in turn do an additional review, looking at historical trends and financial information to ensure that they match what we see is what's happening in the industry. Um, we then bring, brought this forward to the board in a work session on November 1st. And then we kind of brings us up to today as here at the public hearing. A couple of major factors that are impacting this, this rate increases, we've gone through a review. And the first is, is fuel. In 2018, our haulers are experiencing a 34% increase in fuel costs. Um, significant impact year over year. This was nothing that we saw in our COSA last year in our projections. That was an anticipated increase, so that's a, it's a big fluctuation. That being said, looking forward to 2019, when we look at the rates, uh, we're actually not seeing any form of increase again, but almost a decrease. But we chose to keep that flat. So we're not only having a, we're not doing a double bump in a sense. We're doing a 34% look and then we're not anticipating an increase in 2019 for fuel. The other piece is directly related to what Reed's presentation was, the recycling markets that have changed significantly this last year. Um, something that we have not experienced in the industry forever. Uh, kind of a catastrophic shift of markets. Um, in 2017, our haulers were paid an average of $8.95 percent, $8.95 cents per ton for the recycled materials. Fast forward to this year, it is out now costing them. So they're paying an average of $80.22, so almost a $90 shift per ton, uh, for revenue. And, and not in a good way. So based on the COSA, uh, the haulers are proposing rate increases, you know, kind of for the following areas to take effect January 1st of 2019, just kind of a summary here. Uh, so for our Marion urban customers, um, those are the ones, uh, within kind of the UGB Salem area that we refer to as the East Salem Service District. Um, the cart increase is 11.4%. This amounts to $2.88 per month, uh, increase for your standard kind of 35 gallon cart. Uh, container rate increase of 9.07%. This is, uh, $12.13 per month, uh, for your two yard container. A drop box increase of 4.21%. This amounts to, uh, $7.05 increase for a 30 yard box. Shifting to the Marion rural sparse area, a cart increase of 10.55%. So this is $2.90 and $3.29 respectively for that 35 gallon cart. Container increase of 1.26%, which is a $1.67 per month increase for that two yard container. And this year for a drop box, we see no rate change for rural or sparse. Um, for a commercial medical waste collection, for Marion urban and rural, uh, for the high volume customers, high volume customers, that's, uh, 60 boxes plus per month. It's a 23% increase. Low volume customers of one to 59 boxes per month, that's a 4.8% increase. And for the Salem Hospital, the collection disposal only of a 6.2% increase. Uh, at this point, I'd like to turn it over for Estelle.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you, Brian, for that good, uh, summary. I'm Estelle Harland, Solid Waste Management Consultant for the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association. And that's the association for your solid waste franchisees. Brian has described the process. Let me tell you that that started, the process started with the individual companies in January. And then during February and March, as he described, they turned over their material to me. And by, uh, April, we had it, we had it, uh, all, uh, in really clean condition. And it was turned over to Diane Porth for making the composite. Following that, uh, during the summer and fall, we've been meeting with county staff. We had a work session with you on November 1 and we're here today, almost a year, a year later from when we started the process. So we have been very thorough in looking at these numbers. And as Brian described, a year ago, we did not expect to be coming before you for a rate increase today. But costs occurred that were just simply beyond our control. You have heard from county staff, from the franchisee recycling coordinator and from Garten Foundation on the status of recycling. With one of the most significant reasons for our needed rate increase being that we have had the loss of revenue as described from, uh, our marketing of recyclable materials. That revenue simply no longer exists. The 2018 market development in China was quick and it was unexpected. Recycling material sales has never covered the cost of recycling. But it has provided an offset. Uh, and each year that offset, we've, we've accounted for that in, uh, as an offset to our costs for doing the recycling. Rather than having that offset, we are now paying over $80 a ton for every ton that we take to the processor on average. That creates quite a gap between cost and revenue. But despite this drastic depletion in revenue, it still costs less to take it to the processor than to dispose it as garbage. So it remains a viable program. Now, if customers can keep the materials clean, and we've had a good discussion this morning on what contamination means. And you know that bowling ball that he was talking about, that Reed was talking about or the other things? I'm, I'm looking at this picture here of, of, uh, plastic film and so forth. That's what in the industry we call wishful recycling. And it really isn't good recycling. It's contaminated recycling. And, but if we can see non-contamination starting to occur in, in a greater level, then we believe that prices for the processing will improve. It still won't cover our costs, but it will give us that offset that we have had traditionally. The industry is hopeful that better conditions will prevail as domestic markets come online and some of those are beginning to come online to take the materials previously sent to China. All of this is important because Marion County is recognized as one of the best solid waste management systems in the state. There are over 60,000 recycling carts out there in unincorporated Marion County and City of Salem that's picking up garbage and are picking up recycling at, well, they're also picking up garbage. But these are the recycling carts that are picking up recycling. And then we have all those recycling carts out there picking up, uh, the mixed organics. So Salem Marion County has a program that is unlike most of the surrounding cities and counties. And it's something to really be proud of. There are many moving pieces in the recycling program. And we need to maintain program stability at this time for both collection and processing. We believe the China effect is a temporary condition if we can see these new markets come online for what was going to China. As an industry going forward, we're going to monitor the system to be sure of what makes sense for efficiency and cost effectiveness and for good public service. We have put a lot of effort into recycling education. We believe that's key. And, uh, we are constantly upgrading our recycling education as we get feedback from customers. And then you've heard from Reed this morning, having a recycling coordinator who is making the message uh, more understandable for the customers is another positive way to upgrade what goes into that recycling cart. And then Brian referred to the other major condition that is creating this need for a, a rate increase. And that's the increased cost of fuel. As he said, we've had a 34% increase this year that we did not expect. And to put that into perspective, there are three trucks out there going to every, every household. Garbage, recycling, mixed organics. Three trucks using fuel, all of which went up 34% this last year. That's a big deal for us, for that line item. That's a big deal for us, for that line item. The requested increase in the solid waste rate covers all three lines of service. We get this question asked sometime, well, does this cover everything? Yes, it covers everything. This fee increase that we're asking covers solid waste, recycling, and mixed organics. But we have been able to hold down that rate over the years because of the automation system that we implemented. For example, under the old manual system of lifting cans and dumping into the garbage truck, there were often two people on the truck. And depending on the route, they could collect cans and dump about 150 to 300 per day, per route. Now with the automated trucks in the system, there's one person on the truck, and they can collect between 800 and 1,000 carts per day, per route. So that's a huge efficiency. It costs the industry a lot, and you were aware of this, and we came to you with the rates that we needed to put that system into place. But it has paid for itself, and it is still continuing to be such a good, efficient system. So we have adapted, we've automated, but we cannot eliminate costs. We're doing everything in our control to cut the costs, but this is a necessary and unique system. The recycling revenue losses and the cost increases for fuel are beyond our control. We are interested, however, in ways customers can cut costs. And one viable alternative would be to downsize or to go to an on-call, an on-call service. On-call means that you simply call your company when your cart is full. Now, if you need weekly service, that would not be a good fit for you. But if you could go without regular weekly collection service, call your company and see if it would be a good fit. So we have appreciated working with the county staff, we have appreciated the time that you have taken to, both in the work session and today. We appreciate your years that you've been here, and we just are so proud of the system here in Marion County, and we appreciate your considering this rate increase today. Do you have questions?
Well, thank you for your presentation, and as we've discussed, we had a fairly in-depth conversation in our management update meeting where we looked at the rate schedules and asked questions about different size places and carts and that kind of thing. So I actually don't have any questions right now, but I think it's important to underscore the thorough analysis that's done with multiple people and multiple checks and balances to make sure that the numbers are accurate and that we're reflecting what the governing principle is of having that roughly 10% margin for the haulers. So thank you for that.
And that's a before-tax margin.
Right. Commissioner Cameron?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. These rates, and I just want to be clear, these rates are outside of any city limits, correct? Because each city has their own franchise agreement or their own rates. And on page five, and I didn't catch this when we, on page five, I think, where is it here, the second bullet point, franchisees in Marion County provide a number of recycling collection services not provided in other jurisdictions, including curbside recycling, collection of motor oil, antifreeze, latex paint, cooking oil, and household batteries. That only occurs with inside the urban growth boundary. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So I know, I know we don't need to probably really put a press on recovering more materials, but I know some of our rural cities, other areas, don't provide those deals. Is that an agreement that's made between the haulers and the city when they set those rates? So if a city, say Mill City or Idana or Detroit, I always think of the canyon or go up north, wanted those things, they would have to negotiate those? So we potentially are not getting all the recovery that we could of, because those particular jurisdictions are going to be throwing the stuff in the garbage and not recovering at all.
Unless they drive down to the transfer station.
Exactly. Well, that's what I do.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that was the exact point I was going to make, Commissioner, is that our two transfer stations have a place for that material to be recycled for those that do not have that service at their curb as those in Salem and within that UGB.
And I was in line when we were moving a couple times, and it's a long line on a Saturday.
It's definitely a long line, and that is one of our number-one priorities in the new year to address.
I was there Sunday afternoon at 4:00, and there was nobody there.
But we were open, so.
Yeah. And the reason I said, I think I asked this question of you, Brian, because I was trying to recycle some paint. We used to have a place I could drop it, and I can't unless it's Tuesday, and I'm not going to be there on a Tuesday because I'm here.
Unless it's Thursday.
Oh, Thursday.
Every Thursday and every other Saturday.
John, can I have Thursday off to recycle my paint?
At our household hazards waste facility, yes. That's some new requirements within the paint care program for recovering that material. Makes it a little more cumbersome. Those customers within the UGB also have that ability to put it at the curb, so.
Okay, but I know I'm paying 50 cents a gallon, no matter where I buy it, right, for that recycle?
Correct.
So can I take it, does Home Depot or does the paint store have to take it back?
Yeah, there are a number, if you go to the paint care website or our site, Recycle Guide, that'll list additional options on a more of a Monday-through-Sunday type schedule that you can drop that off.
All right. Anything else? We have one more person that signed up to testify.
I'm good, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So Michael, is it Brickley?
No, I'm just here.
Oh, okay. And, yeah, why don't we go over here, since you're not part of the PowerPoint presentation? We'll put you at the regular place. Michael Johnson. I know who you are. So state your name for the record, and feel free to make any comments that you want.
Michael Brickley. I'm just here as an interested citizen.
Okay. Anything you want to add to the discussion?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Michael Brickley has more than that. He is the chairman for the East Salem Service District, East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association.
See, I got it right, too.
It has been since April of this year, and in spite of what people say about me, I stopped being that in 2014. I too have some, I want you to know, mine has peanut butter in it, and it has a lid on it. One of the most difficult things we have had out in East Salem is the conversation about what actually goes in the box. And I have been accused of being a broken record because about three months ago, when the conversation really got hot and heavy, you're going to hear this, so somebody's going next week, is that there was complaints about the hauler can't prove what I put in there. They say they have a camera, and it would be nice somehow if we could arrive at the hauler saw this go in, or this one go in, which has a film on it. Not only that, it's a certain pie company out in East Salem.
Good pies, by the way.
Really great pies, too. But the cardboard is stained with oil. So it has, it has no value, and it also has film. But if you look down the list of what shows on the Marion County website, if you look on the haulers' website, there is a list of things that are included. There's a list of things that are included, and if it is included in that list, it goes in the recyclable container, the blue bin. If it's not on that list, what is difficult for a lot of folks who have recycled everything they could to transition to what's on the list. And then there are other folks that will tell me, well, it has a triangle on the bottom, see? And this one has a triangle on the bottom. And one of the comments that we have to make back is, this triangle doesn't mean anything anymore. It's what's on the list. And the other thing, too, is that people know to the day that the recycler, that the hauler is coming, so they know when to put the cart out. And they know when to pick it back up off the street because it's been emptied. But one of the most difficult things is what goes in, and then if things go in that are not supposed to be there, how does the recycler prove to the homeowner or the account that there was something in there?
So this is the discussion we're going to have at your neighborhood association?
That's part of it.
Right.
The other part here, and something you mentioned, about picking up on certain times. If there is, this is something you may want to use as a marketing tool, if there's nothing or your cart is not sufficiently full, don't put your cart out, and the driver moves right on by, saving that stop-and-go time, which, you know, multiplied hundreds of times, eats up gasoline. I know that in the month of November, I'm not putting out my blue cart because it's not full. I may not even put it out until the end of December because it's not full. So that's something that we, if we could get folks to do, don't put out the partial one, put it out when it is full. We can help save the hauler a few dollars a month, times many.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate you both being here and all your service, and look forward to seeing you at your neighborhood meeting.
Yes. And if any of you I invited to be here are here, I thank you. Please come next Thursday night, a week from now.
Right.
Bring your peanut butter gum.
So you're going to have a lot of neighbors there?
I sure hope so.
You hope?
Yeah, okay.
That's good.
They are supposed to be there, yes.
All right. Anyone that didn't sign up who would like to testify? Going once, going twice. All right. Brian, you're back just to answer questions, or you have something else you wanted to say?
Just wanted to make sure that I voiced that staff recommends approval of the proposed rate increases from our haulers association.
Thank you for that small detail. I appreciate that.
You bet. It's kind of key to today, so.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Are we ready to close the hearing and have a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing and approve an increase to the solid waste collection rates charged by our franchise haulers.
And I will second your motion, and I just would make the comment that it is never an easy thing or a joyous thing, I guess, for an elected official to raise fees in any way, shape, or form on anyone. At the same time, I just want to compliment our haulers and all of the folks that are involved, the accountants and so on, for having great analysis and the principles that they brought forward. It's very straightforward, very easy to understand, and also want to make sure that people understand that, you know, this is a partnership that we have here, right? So, I mean, you're doing a service for the community. I think we forget when we step back, if you've ever been to a third-world country or a place where they don't have the kinds of hygiene that we have, and garbage is literally flying around the streets and piled up and so on, what a health service this is to our community. And so it's our responsibility to make sure that we all do our share to make sure that that partnership works. And so I appreciate the educational pieces that we've done today. I know we're not done with that. We have a lot of ways to go. I saw the statistics last night. It looks like we're making progress in terms of people getting the message, but it's kind of, like we've said, it's kind of hard to retrain people when they've been used to doing things a certain way. So anyway, thank you all for being here this morning and for the work that you do. So with that, if there is no further discussion, we will vote. All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's approved. Thank you. All right, so we have one more item on our agenda, and that is to read the Wednesday-to-Wednesday calendar. So if you are leaving, if you would do so very quietly, and you can speak to each other out in the foyer there. We're just completing our Wednesday-to-Wednesday board session that we're on November 28th. Tomorrow, Thursday, November 29th, from 9:00 to 2:00 is a strategic planning session up at the Oregon Garden Resort, 895 West Main Street in Silverton in the Trillium Conference Room. That's followed at 3:30 to 4:30 by a retirement party for Alan Haley, our Public Works Director, who is retiring. That will be held out at the Public Works Building in the Willamette Conference Room, 5155 Silverton Road Northeast in Salem. Friday, November 30th, from 8:30 to 1:00, we'll be having, the board will be conducting interviews with candidates for the new Public Works Director position. That will be held in the Silverton Conference Room upstairs here at Courthouse Square on the fifth floor. 2:00 tomorrow, Friday, I mean tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, day after tomorrow, is the groundbreaking ceremony for the Marion County Juvenile Services Building that will be held out at the juvenile campus, 3030 Center Street Northeast in Salem. Then next week, starting with December 3rd, Monday, we will start the morning at 8:30 with a calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square, followed at 9:00 by management update, same place. 11:00 Public Safety Coordinating Council Planning Meeting, same place. Tuesday, December 4th, at 9:00, will be a work session on economic development, a program update, also in the Silverton Conference Room, followed at 10:30 by the Brook Service District Meeting. And then at 5:00, a very momentous event, Commissioner Janet Carlson's retirement celebration that will be held out at Cascade Hall on the Oregon State Fairgrounds on 17th Street in Salem. The next Wednesday, December 5th, at 9:00 a.m., we're back here in the Senator Hearing Room for a regular Wednesday board session, and I'm thinking that we're doing our CCTV greeting right before that. At noon on December 5th is our monthly Woodburn Marion County meeting at Louisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. There's a meeting that's not on here that it's possible two commissioners may be at if you're interested, and that's the Behavioral Care Network Executive Committee meeting that will be at 3:00 on December the 5th. And then at 5:30 on December 5th is the monthly meeting of the Marion County Fair Board. That's held in the Commissioners' Boardroom, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. All right, so anything for the good of the order?
I think I had a conflict with.
Okay. Probably why it's not on because there's only one.
Governor's Reentry Council meeting that afternoon, so.
All right.
Yeah. Well, like you said, it's never, it's never fun to do that, but it's necessary that we keep up, and I think, I'm glad you pointed out the point about our public safety and public health, and how important this.
I mean, it's something we really take for granted
Right.
in this country, and we grouse about it.
Right.
But we are so fortunate.
Like when I was in Indonesia, and I just saw garbage everywhere, you know, in different places.
Yeah, the smell, the rats, the health hazards, kids playing in the street with garbage around them. It's just not a pretty thing, so.
But a lot of those countries don't produce as much waste per individual either because there's, the economies are different. But I think that's the obvious one, is how do we individually reduce first what we're producing or consuming in waste, and then reusing it, and then recycling, so.
I will hide my fast-food drink cup.
I'm not going to make a comment.
With a straw.
I refill my, you know, I do have a water bottle, water bottles, but I don't know if you know this, but there's the refrigerator in the catering room, and I'm constantly refilling them, but I put them on the bottom shelf so that nobody drinks my water bottles. But I was told that you can only do that two or three times, and then you're going to die of some cancer from the plastic or something.
Okay.
Stick with this.
All right. Well, if there is nothing further, we will adjourn for another week.
All right.